Okay, welcome everybody. We call this meeting to order. The time is now 7:01 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were?
Carol Harvey.
Bob Carlson.
Ken Matthews.
Noel Sawyer.
John Schaefer.
David Putry.
Thank you. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Here in the next agenda item is, actually, we're going to go to number four and we're going to call up who's already here is the beautiful Ms. Doreen Ward.
Pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. That's what we're going to do right now.
Got it. Sure. All rise.
All rise. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard, pass the colors. Color guard, honor the flag. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please do so.
So, the greatest thing about being a mayor is stuff like this. We want to recognize the girls from troop number?
Three, three, four, five.
Three, three, four, four, and their leader, Doreen Ward, and thank them for being here today and being such a great part of our community. And in that regard, I'd like to give everyone that participated today a mayor's bid on behalf of the city council and the whole city of Woodland Park. We want to present this to you and we're very happy to be there. Thank you very much. Come on, ladies. Excellent. I want to give this.
Color guard attention. Honor the flag. Color guard, retire the colors. Color guard, dismissed.
Somehow, I think we should start every meeting like that. Okay, we'll move on to item 4B and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have an appointment to the DDA and we put this in the paper, we put it on Facebook, we put it in the Courier, I said that on Channel 10, all of the places that council requires us to advertise, and we got one application, and that's from Mr. Jerry Good. And I know that he's hearing the audience tonight. He's available to answer any questions that you would like. There's one opening and he's the one applicant. And upon your approval, I am prepared to swear him in for his oath of office.
Jerry, why don't you come forward, if you would, please? While you come up, I'll say a few words.
I need that.
Jerry has been a meaningful part of our community for quite some time now, in two businesses at one time, and now just has the Williams Furniture. And the thing I love about Jerry is he gets it in terms of what it takes to succeed in our community, working 12 hours daily, and just really a big contributor to our entire community, and I was so happy to see him as an applicant for the DDA. He will be a great addition for you, Noel. He really will.
Well, I've heard many good things about you.
Thanks.
So, I'm looking forward to, if the council agrees, to working with you. And many of the other DDA members also have said many good things and looking forward to working with you also. You have a lot of insight into what's going on in the community and how to fix the blight.
Yeah, I've been accused of being opinionated. No, I'm looking forward to this, if you guys so seem fit.
I would also echo what Neil said, getting to know Jerry even better in our Kiwanis Club and his involvement there, and yeah, welcome addition to DDA.
Thank you.
Just as a point of information, Suzanne, could you explain the qualifications for a DDA member?
Yes, they have to either be a property owner in the DDA or, I believe, work in the DDA is the other part.
If I could, a resident within the DDA, a property owner within the DDA, will represent a business, if you will. Dale Schnittker represents Vectra Bank, which has a presence in the downtown. So Dale neither owns, does not own property, nor does he have a residence, but he does manage that business. He represents that business. Jerry does have a business within the DDA, meets the requirements.
John?
Well, I met Jerry just recently and I know he can ask some tough questions.
Sorry. I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions for Jerry? Okay, if not, I'll entertain the motion. I move approval of Jerry Good through the DDA group as presented.
Second.
Great. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. I'm swearing to you, Jerry.
Thanks, Suzanne. While she does that, council, I've been advised, we need to pull our microphones a little bit closer.
Suppose raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Jerry Good.
Hi, Jerry Good.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And to the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Order, Ordinance and, what?
Of the City of Woodland Park.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The Duties of Member.
The Duties of Member.
And here's the mouthful, the Downtown Development Authority Board.
The Downtown Development Authority Warrant?
Board.
Board.
Of Directors.
Board of Directors.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And right here is Mary Jo. She's president of the General of the DDA.
Great.
So we'll have you sign this. I don't know if you want to say anything. Yes. I may need a stool. I'm about to get. Thank you.
While you're signing that, I forgot to mention that his lovely wife, Vicki, is as big a contributor as Jerry is. I hope she's happy that he's taken this position.
My brain flares here all of a sudden. Yes.
So Jerry, you're going to give a speech because this is going to be your 15 minutes of peace until you get on the DDA?
Yeah.
And see what happens from there.
Guys, I'm not a very eloquent speaker. I give up drinking a while back and so I don't even have anything to inspire me. But I'm looking forward to this. I think I, as I was telling Neil earlier, I'm going to maybe have a different flavor, a different approach from perspective, and I'm anxious to learn what this is all about, you know? I've lasted several days, honestly, following you guys. I watched you guys on YouTube today and I'm learning a lot about it and I'm getting more excited about being a part of it. So, thank you for accepting me.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I just wanted to say, as the Director of the DDA, that I really am excited to have Jerry on. This is a new day.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, no additions, deletions, or corrections today. Suzanne, the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. On the consent calendar this evening, we have the minutes from the last council meeting of March 3rd, we have the January 2016 Statement of Expenditures, and we have the IGA between the City of Woodland Park and the Woodland Park School District regarding the reimbursement of election-related costs.
Council questions?
I guess I just want, for the record, to clarify the, how that IGA is going to work with the taxes. Sales tax will come to the city and the city will then disperse it to the school system.
Council, this IGA does not address how the taxes would be allocated. That will happen upon passage.
Okay.
The notion being that the school district and the city would enter into an IGA at that time that would cover those issues. This is simply to cover the election costs and to ensure that those costs that the city is incurring that have to do with this viral issue are covered by the school district. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll call for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I move to approve ordinance number 1258 as presented.
Okay.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Suzanne. We'll move on to public hearings. Item number nine, and before we do that, I will read the following. Council members, use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the commonplace practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during the public hearings. That's Sally Lally and considering approval of the Woodland Park Aquatic Center final plat. Sally?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Council members, good evening. This is a public hearing for the final plat for the Woodland Aquatic Center, which creates a one-lot parcel out of the 42 acres that the school district owns just east of Baldwin Street. So, I'd like to begin with an aerial that just gives you a perspective of how this property will be laid out. Here is Baldwin Street going north and south, and then it is intersected by Midland Avenue to the south and the bus loop outlined in yellow. Highlighted in yellow is approximately the 2.1 acre tract, which the Aquatic Center will sit on. I've also highlighted some of the adjoining properties. There's a daycare just to the west of this site, storage units, a single-family home, the student parking lot south of Panther Way and north of Lot 1. I've also shown you where detention ponds are going to be located on this site. The purpose this evening is to determine that this is a buildable site for what you plan on using. It is not about discussing the site plan in any detail, but one of the conditions of a subdivision is that it adequately drains and is able to be suitable for construction. The administration buildings are off to the east, as well as Woodland Park High School and Gateway Elementary School. This is the zoning map, which shows the Lot 1 approximately in the front portion of the 42 acres, which is shown in blue. That is zoned public, semi-public, and then there are a variety of different zones all around this site, as you can see by the myriad of colors that we have. Immediately to the west is the community commercial zone, and then further west is central business district, and you can see Highway 24 and its proximity to Midland Avenue. Then to the north, there's a small zone of urban residential, then neighborhood commercial, also to the north, multifamily urban, where the Aspenwood condominiums are located, multifamily suburban, more multifamily units. And then to the south, further south, is a suburban residential, single-family development, Thunder Ridge, as well as the PUD planned unit development for the old Thunderbird camp. That's the zoning. Existing conditions, to show you a couple of photos. The one on the upper left is taken from the southwest corner of the lot, looking east. This is approximately where the bus loop intersects with Baldwin Street, and then I went on the other side of the property, looking toward the west. This is the eastern side. You can see the old tennis courts that used to be on this site. You can also see that it's relatively flat and very buildable. Surrounding properties, I've already reviewed them with you on the arrow, but to the west is the daycare and then the storage units. We also have the high school and the bus loop. The plat, I know you can't read this from here, but in your packets, was the standard language for plats that is created by a licensed surveyor. This is consistent with our subdivision regulations, Title 17. And then you have the drawing, which details the courses or the boundary lines for each of the various, this one parcel. It also identifies all the easements on the plat, and I just wanted to point out that on the west side, there will be a 25-foot easement, primarily because a large drainage pipe is being replaced there, and so that drainage easement, as well as there'll be a right turn into the parking lot, so we need a little extra area for that. Baldwin Street is 60 feet wide, so it's a relatively wide road right-of-way, which gives us plenty of room to be able to create turning lanes for folks entering the Aquatic Center. From the north, they'll have a dedicated left turn lane into that site. From the south, you'll be able to use a right turn pocket into that parking lot, and we're still going to be able to add sidewalks on both sides of the street. Here is the site plan, just to show you how the Aquatic Center will be placed as close or toward the western side of the lot, leaving area in the eastern side of the lot for future development, should that occur. And Baldwin Street, as I was explaining, this is the right turn pocket into the parking lot, and then coming from the north, there will be a dedicated left turn lane. And there was a comprehensive traffic study done by LSC that recommended these improvements to Baldwin Street in order to better serve the visitors to the Aquatic Center. Again, outlined in yellow is the approximate boundaries of the plat. When we review a plat, it's very technical, it's really quite straightforward, because the land surveyor is primarily responsible for meeting the state and the city's requirements. So the first, the chapter looks at plat information, and we review it for accuracy and easements. That is all appropriate. The purpose of this is to create the one-lot subdivision of 2.1 acres. It has the opportunity for modes of travel, both pedestrian and vehicular. It's an adequate buildable area, and it also minimizes excavation. The site is suitable for subdivision and development, as far as grading, drainage, utilities, and landscaping. And the lot provides for a street frontage, about 228 feet on Baldwin Street, which also intersects with South Avenue and Panther Way to the north, Midland Avenue, right at that southwest corner, and further down Baldwin Street, Pike's Peak, and eventually intersects with Highway 24. The easements I've reviewed with you are acceptable. The larger easement on the west side, then there is also 10-foot easements to the north and to the east, and a 15-foot easement to the south. And Utilities has looked at all of these and they are appropriate. As far as any stormwater easements, there are no water courses on this site. The detention will occur off-site, and there will be upgrades to the culverts. So with that, we recommend approval. Planning Commission did review this a week ago and voted unanimously to recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the plat.
Thank you, Sally. Questions?
No. I did have some concern, and you addressed it, and thank you for that, where we're adding another turn lane into, into the school district, and we don't have sidewalks on the other side. I heard you mention we're going to put sidewalks. How far up and how far down are those sidewalks going to go? Because we have three stop signs there.
Happy to answer that question. I do want to just preface it that that is outside the plat.
I understand.
Requirements, so, but I will be happy to answer that. Let me get to the site plan. So, the sidewalks currently are on the east side of Baldwin Street, and this goes all the way to the middle school. So that will continue to be the case. On the west side, the daycare was required to put in sidewalks adjacent to their property. So right now, it terminates right about where my arrow is, at their property line. The new sidewalk is planned to go up to South Avenue at this point in time, and we'll be looking at continuing it to Lake Avenue.
And then what about adding a side? Could we take it, maybe this is a question for Dave, and I'm sorry if it's out of the scope, but it's kind of creating a sidewalk from the daycare down to the next?
We've not considered that.
The primary flow of pedestrian traffic is from the north to the south, and as you pointed
out, there are three floorway intersections, and this is one of the intersections where there are crossing guards. So we have adequate, we believe adequate sidewalks on the east side going south, and with the addition of those on the west side going north, we think we'll capture the vast majority of the pedestrian traffic. What we witnessed is kids walking eastbound on Lake and turning right and cutting down what now exists as the Baldwin right-of-way, where the mailbox units are, and so we're not exactly sure what the connection will be within that triangular area, but south of that, we know we need to make a connection to get the kids down to a safe spot so that they can cross Baldwin.
Great. That's great to hear, because that is a dangerous intersection up there, and there's no crossing guard. And you're right, the kids do cut across that lot, and there's a nice slow trail right there, so.
Right.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Want to public comment right now? Do you have any comments from the audience?
Regarding the?
Excuse me. If you'd like to come forward and just give us your name, Bill, and your address, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Bill, off to 900 Center Camino? Thank you. Regarding your parking lot, will that be used by teachers and students also?
No. And again, that's kind of outside the scope of the final plat discussion, but I'm happy to answer that question. No, the parking for the Aquatic Center will be for the Aquatic Center only.
Okay.
We have agreements with the school district that will allow Aquatic Center staff to park in the parking lot that is the bus turnaround. Sally, if you would point to that right quickly. There's sufficient space there for the Aquatic Center staff, and then during swim meet events and weekends and holidays, when school is not in session, we'll be able to use the bus turnaround and the high school parking lot for parking.
All right. I only see four parking spaces. Is that, is that all there is?
No, there's 30 on the north side.
30?
Correct, and four on the south side.
Oh, okay. Well, that'd be great.
And there is a staircase that will connect both levels, the student parking lot and the lower parking lot.
Should be adequate. Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions? Council? Any other questions? Sally, thank you very much. Call for motion.
I move to approve the Woodland Aquatic Center final plat as submitted.
Second. Motion and a second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Thank you.
I move to approve ordinance number 1259 as presented.
Okay.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Suzanne. We'll move on to public hearings. Item number nine, and before we do that, I will read the following. Council members, use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the commonplace practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during the public hearings. That's Sally Lally, and considering approval, the Woodland Park Aquatic Center final plat. Sally?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Council members, good evening. This is a public hearing for the final plat for the Woodland Aquatic Center, which creates a one-lot parcel out of the 42 acres that the school district owns just east of Baldwin Street. So I'd like to begin with an aerial that just gives you a perspective of how this property will be laid out. Here is Baldwin Street going north and south, and then it is intersected by Midland Avenue to the south, and the bus loop outlined in yellow. Highlighted in yellow is approximately the 2.1 acre tract, which the Aquatic Center will sit on. I've also highlighted some of the adjoining properties. There's a daycare just to the west of this site, storage units, a single-family home, the student parking lot south of Panther Way and north of Lot 1. I've also shown you where detention ponds are going to be located on this site. The purpose this evening is to determine that this is a buildable site for what you plan on using. It is not about discussing the site plan in any detail, but one of the conditions of a subdivision is that it adequately drains and is able to be suitable for construction. The administration buildings are off to the east, as well as Woodland Park High School and Gateway Elementary School. This is the zoning map, which shows the Lot 1 approximately in the front portion of the 42 acres, which is shown in blue. That is zoned public, semi-public, and then there are a variety of different zones all around this site, as you can see by the myriad of colors that we have. Immediately to the west is the community commercial zone, and then further west is central business district, and you can see Highway 24 and its proximity to Midland Avenue. Then to the north, there's a small zone of urban residential, then neighborhood commercial, also to the north, multifamily urban, where the Aspenwood condominiums are located, multifamily suburban, more multifamily units. And then to the south, further south, is a suburban residential, single-family development, Thunder Ridge, as well as the PUD planned unit development for the old Thunderbird camp. That's the zoning. Existing conditions, to show you a couple of photos. The one on the upper left is taken from the southwest corner of the lot, looking east. This is approximately where the bus loop intersects with Baldwin Street, and then I went on the other side of the property, looking toward the west. This is the eastern side. You can see the old tennis courts that used to be on this site. You can also see that it's relatively flat and very buildable. Surrounding properties, I've already reviewed them with you on the arrow, but to the west is the daycare and then the storage units. We also have the high school and the bus loop. The plat, I know you can't read this from here, but in your packets, was the standard language for plats that is created by a licensed surveyor. This is consistent with our subdivision regulations, Title 17. And then you have the drawing, which details the courses or the boundary lines for each of the various, this one parcel. It also identifies all the easements on the plat, and I just wanted to point out that on the west side, there will be a 25-foot easement, primarily because a large drainage pipe is being replaced there, and so that drainage easement, as well as there'll be a right turn into the parking lot, so we need a little extra area for that. Baldwin Street is 60 feet wide, so it's a relatively wide road right-of-way, which gives us plenty of room to be able to create turning lanes for folks entering the Aquatic Center. From the north, they'll have a dedicated left turn lane into that site. From the south, you'll be able to use a right turn pocket into that parking lot, and we're still going to be able to add sidewalks on both sides of the street. Here is the site plan, just to show you how the Aquatic Center will be placed as close or toward the western side of the lot, leaving area in the eastern side of the lot for future development, should that occur. And Baldwin Street, as I was explaining, this is the right turn pocket into the parking lot, and then coming from the north, there will be a dedicated left turn lane. And there was a comprehensive traffic study done by LSC that recommended these improvements to Baldwin Street in order to better serve the visitors to the Aquatic Center. Again, outlined in yellow is the approximate boundaries of the plat. When we review a plat, it's very technical, it's really quite straightforward, because the land surveyor is primarily responsible for meeting the state and the city's requirements. So the first, the chapter looks at plat information, and we review it for accuracy and easements. That is all appropriate. The purpose of this is to create the one-lot subdivision of 2.1 acres. It has the opportunity for modes of travel, both pedestrian and vehicular. It's an adequate buildable area, and it also minimizes excavation. The site is suitable for subdivision and development, as far as grading, drainage, utilities, and landscaping. And the lot provides for a street frontage, about 228 feet on Baldwin Street, which also intersects with South Avenue and Panther Way to the north, Midland Avenue, right at that southwest corner, and further down Baldwin Street, Pike's Peak, and eventually intersects with Highway 24. The easements I've reviewed with you are acceptable. The larger easement on the west side, then there is also 10-foot easements to the north and to the east, and a 15-foot easement to the south. And Utilities has looked at all of these, and they are appropriate. As far as any stormwater easements, there are no water courses on this site. The detention will occur off-site, and there will be upgrades to the culverts. So with that, we recommend approval. Planning Commission did review this a week ago and voted unanimously to recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the plat.
Thank you, Sally. Questions?
No. I did have some concern, and you addressed it, and thank you for that, where we're adding another turn lane into, into the school district, and we don't have sidewalks on the other side. I heard you mention we're going to put sidewalks. How far up and how far down are those sidewalks going to go? Because we have three stop signs there.
Happy to answer that question. I do want to just preface it that that is outside the plat.
I understand.
Requirements, so, but I will be happy to answer that. Let me get to the site plan. So, the sidewalks currently are on the east side of Baldwin Street, and this goes all the way to the middle school. So that will continue to be the case. On the west side, the daycare was required to put in sidewalks adjacent to their property. So right now, it terminates right about where my arrow is, at their property line. The new sidewalk is planned to go up to South Avenue at this point in time, and we'll be looking at continuing it to Lake Avenue.
And then what about adding a side?
I've already reviewed them with you on the arrow, but to the west is the daycare, and then the storage units. We also have the high school and the bus loop. The plat, I know you can't read this from here, but in your packets was the standard language for plats that is created by a licensed surveyor. This is consistent with our subdivision regulations, Title 17. And then you have the drawing which details the courses or the boundary lines for each of the various part, this one parcel. It also identifies all the easements on the plat, and I just wanted to point out that on the west side, there will be a 25-foot easement, primarily because a large drainage pipe is being replaced there, and so that drainage easement, as well as there'll be a right turn into the parking lot, so we need a little extra area for that. Baldwin Street is 60 feet wide, so it's a relatively wide road right-of-way, which gives us plenty of room to be able to create turning lanes for folks entering the Aquatics Center. From the north, they'll have a dedicated left-turn lane into that site. From the south, you'll be able to use a right-turn pocket into that parking lot, and we're still going to be able to add sidewalks on both sides of the street. Here is the site plan, just to show you how the Aquatics Center will be placed as close or toward the western side of the lot, leaving area in the eastern side of the lot for future development, should that occur. And Baldwin Street, as I was explaining, this is the right-turn pocket into the parking lot, and then coming from the north, there will be a dedicated left-turn lane. And there was a comprehensive traffic study done by LSC that recommended these improvements to Baldwin Street in order to better serve the visitors to the Aquatics Center. Again, outlined in yellow is the approximate boundaries of the plat. When we review a plat, it's very technical, it's really quite straightforward, because the land surveyor is primarily responsible for meeting the state and the city's requirements. So the first, the chapter looks at plat information, and we review it for accuracy and easements, that is all appropriate. The purpose of this is to create the one-lot subdivision of 2.1 acres. It has the opportunity for modes of travel, both pedestrian and vehicular. It's an adequate buildable area, and it also minimizes excavation. The site is suitable for subdivision and development, as far as grading, drainage, utilities, and landscaping. And the lot provides for a street frontage, about 228 feet on Baldwin Street, which also intersects with South Avenue and Panther Way to the north, Midland Avenue, right at that southwest corner, and further down Baldwin Street, Pike's Peak, and eventually intersects with Highway 24. The easements I've reviewed with you are acceptable, the larger easement on the west side, then there is also 10-foot easements to the north and to the east, and a 15-foot easement to the south. And Utilities has looked at all of these, and they are appropriate. As far as any stormwater easements, there are no water courses on this site. The detention will occur off-site, and there will be upgrades to the culverts. So with that, we recommend approval. Planning Commission did review this a week ago and voted unanimously to recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the plat.
Thank you, Sally. Questions?
No.
I did have some concern, and you addressed it, and thank you for that, where we're adding another turn lane into, into the school district, and we don't have sidewalks on the other side. I heard you mention we're going to put sidewalks. How far up and how far down are those sidewalks going to go? Because we have three stop signs there.
Happy to answer that question. I do want to just preface it that that is outside the plat.
I understand.
Requirements, so, but I will be happy to answer that. Let me get to the site plan. So the sidewalks currently are on the east side of Baldwin Street, and they, this goes all the way to the middle school. So that will continue to be the case. On the west side, the daycare was required to put in sidewalks adjacent to their property. So right now, it terminates right about where my arrow is, at their property line. The new sidewalk is planned to go up to South Avenue at this point in time, and we'll be looking at continuing it to Lake Avenue.
And then what about adding a side, could we take it, maybe this is a question for Dave, and I'm sorry if it's out of the scope, but it's kind of creating sidewalk from the daycare down to the next.
We've not considered that. The primary flow of pedestrian traffic is from the north to the south, and as you pointed out, there are three floorway intersections, and this is one of the intersections where there are crossing guards. So we have adequate, we believe adequate sidewalks on the east side going south, and with the addition of those on the west side going north, we think we'll capture the vast majority of the pedestrian traffic. What we witnessed is kids walking eastbound on Lake, and turning right and cutting down what now exists as the Baldwin right-of-way, where the mailbox units are. And so we're not exactly sure what the connection will be within that triangular area, but south of that, we know we need to make a connection to get the kids down to a safe spot, so that they can cross Baldwin.
Great, that's great to hear, because that is a dangerous intersection up there, and there's no crossing guard. And you're right, the kids do cut across that lot, and there's a nice slow trail right there, so.
Right.
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any public comment right now? Do you have any comments from the audience?
Regarding the.
Excuse me. If you'd like to come forward and just give us your name, Bill, and your address, I'd appreciate it, thank you. Bill, off to 900 Center Camino?
Thank you.
Regarding the parking lot, will that be used by teachers and students also?
No, and again, that's kind of outside the scope of the final plat discussion, but I'm happy to answer that question. No, the parking for the Aquatics Center will be for the Aquatics Center only. We have agreements with the school district that will allow Aquatics Center staff to park in the parking lot that is the bus turnaround. Sally, if you would point to that right quickly. There's sufficient space there for the Aquatics Center staff. And then during swim meet events, and weekends, and holidays, when school is not in session, we'll be able to use the bus turnaround and the high school parking lot for parking.
All right. And you see four parking spaces, is that, is that all there is?
No, there's 30 on the north side.
30?
Correct, and four on the south side.
Oh, okay. Well, that'd be great.
And there is a staircase that will connect both levels, the student parking lot and the lower parking lot.
Should be adequate. Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions? That's all? All the questions? Sally, thank you very much. Call for motion.
I'm going to approve the Woodland Aquatics Center final plat as soon as.
Second. Motion and a second. Suzanne.
Thank you. Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. And we'll move on to new messages and approving resolution number 805. Mr. Riley, welcome back.
Thank you. On your desk in front of you, we left the packet for the 2015 water debt management reconciliation. So Resolution 805 establishes water and sewer plant investment fees for the following year, so for 2016. So bottom line upfront, we're looking at recommending a 5% increase in both water and sewer plant investment fees effective April 1st, 2016. So I wanted to point your attention to the packet I left, and the first page was the water debt service schedule. Everything on that schedule above the dotted line is actual numbers, everything below is projection or the schedule for payments. What I wanted to point out to you guys was, this year, we paid off four loans in 2015. In 2015, we paid off four loans for a total of just over $1 million, so it's a pretty exciting time for the water fund. We paid off the 2005 water bonds, the 1999 COPs, the 2003 dollar water purchase, that was the water shares down in Crowley County, and then the loan from wastewater to water that was also paid off. Moving on to the next sheet is the water capital expenditure schedule. Here again, everything above the dash line is actual, everything below is a projection. However, in 2015, it was a very big year. You can see all the way to the right in the annual total, right above the dash line, there's $351,000 of cash expenditures. And if you look up above that, the last time we had anything significant was 2003. So this, in 2015, we were able to purchase capital equipment, we bought the Twin Lake water shares, and it was just a very, very good year. And then we're also catching up. As you look at previous years, we hadn't spent a lot of money, and we were in a save mode, and we've been able to, with our fund balance, catch back up with those projects that need to be done. So, and then moving on to the actual spreadsheet, the large spreadsheet on the back, just going to go through this real quick. So here again, everything above the dash line is actual numbers, everything below is projections. So in 2015, column C1, which is third from the left, on the, third on the right from the left-hand side, where that's single-family taps. So you can see 17 is the number there, it's, we haven't had that many taps sold in a long time. It's great to see that residential construction's coming back. Moving over all the way to what's highlighted in red, that is that just over $1 million in debt that we paid off. Then the next column over in orange is the capital expenses for that, for 15. And then moving over, column P, second from the end there, you'll see just an annual reduction of basically our fund balance, or how much we spent that we didn't bring in. And then our fund balance, all the way on the right of about 1.3. Now that, these are projections, they're not audited numbers yet, the audit will happen very soon here, and hopefully it'll verify these numbers. Yes?
Just a quick question. Single-family residence taps, it's 17, and then the next three years, you dropped to 10. Is there any, I mean, just being conservative, is there any, any real judgment behind why we're doing that?
Yes, we'd like to be conservative, you know, if we overestimate it, excuse the numbers, if we underestimate or be conservative, what we get is a benefit, so I don't want to overpredict. You know, you could say it might climb and then go back down, so I kind of just took a middle ground for the next three years.
Okay. For example, do you remember what the projection was for 2015?
For 2015, I believe we budgeted 7.
Thank you.
One of the things that we took a look at was when, when we did the budget for 2016, remember I mentioned earlier, we start that process in July, and we start bringing that to you in October, we budgeted for eight single-family residential tap sales for 2016. You'll see here, we bumped it up to 10. As we concluded 2015, we had more tap sales, which gave us a degree of confidence that 2016 could increase over the eight that we budgeted for. We still think eight is somewhat conservative, but we didn't think it was prudent to go above that. It doesn't hurt us to have this number, but it might give us a false sense of security if we went above that 10.
Okay. Thanks.
Amount available water for our community seems to be a concern to a certain segment of our population. One comment on the Facebook was that we seem to have a lot more water available, but then we could, we also say, well, let's impose water conservation measures because we don't have enough water. That seems to be, at least in some people's minds, a contradiction. If we have a lot, we have enough to build 12,000 housing units or whatever, why are we having water conservation? I myself know the answer to that, but I thought, you know, for the record, it might be useful to address that concern.
We don't have more water available this year than compared to previous years. You only have more water available as people use less, or you develop more water. So the amount of water we have is strictly based off of what we believe our sources can provide, and that gives you a certain number. Now, every year, we establish the annual tap allotment based off that water, and every year, the taps go down, the amount of taps go down as we sell more. So until we develop more water, there's not more water available.
Well, I think the point here is that our build-out was something like 12,000. And so are, in order to reach that 12,000, then are we going to have to buy more water from Twin Lakes?
No.
So in other words, that is available for 12,000.
For 12,600 people is what the build-out is, that's when we develop more local sources. So we have plans and water rights to develop those sources, but as, as the city grows, that's when we develop those, because they're just further out, they're further away.
Okay. So in other words, yes, if we have a drought or something, then people do need to conserve water or something, so.
We're always one.
We haven't developed those sources yet.
We're always one year away from, we're always one dry year away from the next drought. Right now, with the water that we have, we conserve 11,111 people, not 12,600. We just have to develop.
But that's still well above what we have, population-wise, right?
Yes. Population, water population-wise is right around 12, or, I'm sorry, 8,600, roughly.
So that includes the people that are outside of the city boundaries, that, in a county that we also provide water.
It's all of our customers, yes.
But water conservation is just right living. When you live in a semi-irritated environment, that's just the way that we should do things.
Go ahead, John. What was your number, Kip, 11,000 something?
11,111.
11111. Very scientific. Okay. What's your mind's point? If I look at the next 10 years, multi-family and commercial, I see 20 units in 2018, 20 units in 2022. What's the basis for those numbers?
Well, we know more multi-family is going to come forward. How much? My crystal ball is clear, I know exactly what to do, but that's just kind of a rough guess. Basically, it's just a projection.
All right. Is that sort of a, I'll call it a place card holder, to make sure we have that considered?
Yes. And if you, and if you add all these up, you know, if, you know, commercial lots are few, and, you know, there's few, fewer and fewer commercial lots out there, so you can almost look at this and say, it's almost all multi-family in this category. So there's some bigger, you know, portion set size, but if you add up all these multi-family, it's a, it's a good number. It's a big number, and the, the multi-family bank would have to be increased.
So you coordinate with the planning department, too, to find out towards Phase 2, John's development up on 67 North, are those, and those are multi-family apartment buildings?
They are.
So those are, those numbers are taken into account in 17 and 18?
No, because those haven't come through. It's don't count your chickens approach. Same thing with how we estimate, you know, future tap, residential tap sales. When they come through, it's, it's a good thing, and then we adjust.
Okay, but if you're forecasting, you might as well forecast on something that.
But when I count something that's too large, I got to be conservative.
Okay.
There's always a lot of talk of things that could happen that don't happen. So moving forward, everything below the dash line is projections. So for 2016, I'd like to point your attention to the highlighted blue area. That's a 5% increase in tap fees for 2016, and then a 5% increase projected until 2035. So this has tap fees going up 5% a year, every year. Okay. Moving more to the right, in the highlighted green area, why I highlighted that is because water capital fees have been $3.25 since 1997. And the UAC, after their review of this, also recommended that we look at attaching the capital fees with the annual adjustment that happens every April. Because it hasn't in the past, it's been $3.25 forever, so we'd like to bring an ordinance to you later on in this year that will allow us to adjust the capital fee on your, on the water bill. Also, in projections is the annual adjustment, which April 1st, you'll see an increase in water and wastewater bills of 0.88%. That's 75% of the Consumer Price Index. So also, what you'll see this year is Utilities bring forward another ordinance to adjust the annual adjustment to 100% of the Consumer Price Index, instead of 75%. Yes, sir.
The average tap fee, going back to that for a moment, you said, is that 5% per year?
Yes.
Is that automatic, or is that negotiable? Let's say the single-family residences does increase and gets back to where we were quite a few years ago, can that be adjusted, or is it just going to be automatic at 5%? I mean, is that up to our group?
That's up to your group. The standard is 5%, but if we show that we don't have to raise tap fees, then we'll bring that to you for your approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question. Should folks in the donut holes decide they want to be annexed, where they're paying the double water sewer bill, they would no longer be paying for that? Is that within a, it's not a, is that a significant amount of money that you would have to plan for, or is it something within the margin of error?
Depends, you know, there's, there's a number of donut holes, it depends on how many residents are in those donut holes, if they all annex in, and then they go back to what I'll call inside-city limit rates. You know, they pay double rates, I'd have to, I'd have to do the math. I don't want to say it's insignificant, but in the big picture, it probably is, but every little cent helps.
Kip, can you explain F1?
F1, water development fees? When, back in 2000, an ordinance was put into place about certain properties, and when, for example, when a new property is annexed into the city, they'll pay a water development fee based on a formula to participate in our water needs.
So 5,000, 5,000, 5,000, that's more just a placeholder, those really?
Those, you know.
Unknown numbers there.
I can't say that we'll never annex anybody else, but from a water standpoint, we always look at it because we're planning, we have a limited resource that we're working with, so to bring more property in, we have to plan for it.
But in a situation where somebody has been paying double water sewer bill for 20 years, as, you know, existing, a user outside the city boundary, would they, when they get annexed into the city, would have to pay that water development fee, too? No?
It's based on when they buy a tap. If they already have a tap, they don't have to do that.
It really sounds like we should just get rid of Teller County and call it Woodland Park County, right, Bob?
Yeah. Well, basically, we are providing all the amenities for this county. Not one penny from the county budget goes to any amenity. It's all for their public work centers or whatever, and paving our roads. Nothing goes towards building a senior center or anything else that could be used by citizens, other than their, their own governmental.
You didn't have to answer the question. You were baiting.
Can we bring it back to the action on the table, please?
Hey, let's lighten this place up.
Any other questions for Kip?
No.
Thank you, sir. If you have other questions, need a motion, please, to approve Resolution Number 805. I approve of Resolution 805, as presented. Second. Two handed.
Swing?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Kip. Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, no public comments, our items not on the agenda, we'll move on to reports. Mayor's report, it looks like Mr. Osbach is ready for his part of the participation. Good. Student art. Here we are. Alexis Castor, sixth grader from Middle School, has brought us the student art this evening, and thank you, Alexis, thanks to the Middle School, and as always, if anyone would like to present one of these in their businesses, just contact the admin people at the school, they have a number to choose from, and they're all just as beautiful as that one. Thank you, Mr. Osbach. For how much longer, how many more times do we get to do this? Who's counting?
Yes, thank you.
A couple of announcements for events from March 18th through April 7th. Tuesday, April 5th is election day. Get your mail ballots in, drop boxes in City Hall. I believe people should be receiving their ballots tomorrow or the next day, sometimes.
I actually have some ballots returned.
Already returned.
Some voted ballots are ready.
That's great. Thursday, April 7th, Chamber Lunch and Learn. What is this green slash LED light, lighting revolution? Call 687-9885 for information and reservations. Who's going to present that, Neil?
SBT Designs, Mr. Smith, Steve Smith.
Nice. Also, Thursday, April 7th, 6:00 PM, reception in Council Chambers for outgoing council members, and everybody is welcome. So the next council meeting date at 6 o'clock will be in right here for the outgoing council members. So Mr. Carlson and Mr. Mella, we will miss. That's all I have. Mayor Proton Harvey, would you like to continue?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Carlson?
I did have one comment, and that's for the chief. We have a certain individual on, on Facebook that has been videoing himself committing crimes and things like that, and today, he was being interviewed by Pat Hill, and one of your officers started to ticket him for trespassing, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just hoping that we can put an end to all of this, that we, it isn't perceived by the public as harassment. It's just a heads-up, and hopefully we can take care of this in a wise way.
Thank you. Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
Ken?
Nope.
Phil?
I have a statement I'd like to read into the record. Woodland Park is blessed with unparalleled beauty, a vibrant community, and citizens who care deeply about its future. There are many opportunities on the horizon, but with opportunities come challenges, in particular, in particular, leadership challenges. Besides having a strong and focused vision for the future, one of the hallmarks of superior leadership is independent thinking. With respect to the office of mayor, the courage and aptitude to chart a course that captures public support and trust includes the political will to take positions that may differ from City Hall, as well as one's colleagues. That's why I believe Woodland Park would be best served by a mayor who is willing to bring meaningful transparency, real inclusiveness, and a sense of political candor to our community. I believe that person is Noel Sawyer, a bright, dedicated public servant who is willing to take tough stands and who will earn your trust by developing strong bonds with all citizens. with all citizens of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Phil?
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate that. Nothing.
John?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, city attorney report.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Last but not least, Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, we look forward to presenting the community with our annual report. You have your copies on the dais. It's just a lot of fun to look through. Things that have been accomplished this past year are fairly amazing. And all the great people that make that happen are a pleasure to work with. So I would ask you to share this, look at it. If you have questions, please send them to I or the staff, and get the good word out that lots of good things have happened and lots of good things will continue to happen. Thank you, Mayor. That's all we have from the staff this evening.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I have no comments on written correspondence. Counsel, I need a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. And the record will reflect that motion is as stated on the second page of the agenda. For the purposes of going into executive session under 24/6 for 24E to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. And to subsection B for conference with legal counsel for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions all related to pending litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thanks to everybody for attending.